All right, I'd like to call the planning commission meeting's order for Wednesday, December 11th, 2019.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call. Janet here.
Cindy, Brownish here.
Cynthia here.
Forrest Gini here.
All right. So, the first item on the agenda is the consent agenda, which is a streamlined way that we can approve several things at once. And so, I move that we accept the consent agenda.
I have an objection on one point. A, approval of minutes for 9/25/19, they are a synopsis, they are not the full.
Is that the three and a half hour one?
Yes, the three and a half hour one. Well, the other something on it, something with both sides either, so I think it's very changing.
What is, what you have?
I, just a few minutes. I'm offended by the way we were treated, all of us, and people in our town were treated and felt that they should be reflected in this grand strategy. And they're not, or is why.
How, how does something like that usually work with minutes? I mean...
So, in this case, you, we would pull the, um, pull that item out of the consent agenda, and, um, it sounds like the best way to approach it would be if it's, if it's more of a very general adjustments to the minutes, we pull it out, take your recommendations, and do it in the next meeting. Make those approvals in the next meeting.
So, you have some stuff noted?
Uh, yeah, I don't have it with me. October 9th, also do we have working map finished? It was the maps that we were working on. I'm sorry to be a pain in the butt, but I have questions.
Okay, so for, for the 25th, we'll end up removing it and dealing with it later. And then, and what is it for the 9th?
Uh, the 9th, we were planning on a, uh, plan for a general map, I wanted to find out if it's finished, or if we're near to the point where we can finish it.
Cynthia, did you start live streaming?
I said that I was streaming, yeah, I said I'm streaming.
Okay, all right.
My only option now is to stop streaming.
Right, okay, all right, thank you. So, the, um, the map is included as part of the packet, the...
Our, our town map was supposed to work on that night, I want to know if we have a working copy to go off of.
So, that's included in the packet, available for download on the website, um, the, the map that was worked, reworked at that time, the, of the discussions.
The other minutes I have no problem with.
There were no, there were no recommendations made at that time for adjustments to...
And for housekeeping purposes, um, I don't know if Cynthia could stay on, but I'd like to get that done, because that was our assignment two years ago, two years ago in January. So, we can get that done. The other minutes I have no problem with.
Well, but, but the minutes don't necessarily need to reflect.
I'm just asking a question.
Oh, yeah, no, but you're okay with the minutes?
Yeah, the other minutes, I just want to find out if we have that.
Okay.
So, on, uh, on September 20th, I have to be...
Okay.
So, I'm sorry I can't be asked any questions.
No, that's what it's for.
Okay.
You don't need to be locked up. All right, um, so, then, um, remove the, we, we remove item A from the consent agenda? Want a second that?
I'll take it.
Okay.
Vote. Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And we'll, we'll pick up with that item, um, at, at a later meeting after they've been able to review recommendations. All right, so the, the remaining minutes on the consent agenda, items B and C, for, um, October 9th and October 23rd?
I second.
To approve the minute?
Yes.
Okay, vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. The next item is a public hearing for amendments to 10.4.010, the home occupation definition. And that should be in our packet too. It says, "Home occupation works and parks propped out." All right, now I forgot what we decided with, with hearings, that we were able to get rid of a couple of steps, right?
Yeah, yeah, the chairperson, chairperson can open and close the hearing without...
Without making much impact. Okay, so is everyone on the same, did you find yours? Hmm, oh, yeah, okay. So, I wanted to open the public hearing for the home occupation definition. Um, does anyone have any comments about that? So, read, "Any use conducted entirely within a single-family dwelling and carried on by persons residing within the dwelling unit, which use is clearly incidental and secondary to the use of the dwelling for dwelling purposes and does not change the character thereof and in connection with which there is not display nor stock in trade. The home occupation shall not involve the use of any..."
Yards.
"...yard space," it's not propped out, "yard space not normally associated with residential use. There shall be no sign advertising of any kind in connection with the home occupation. There shall be no foreseeable increase in local traffic. Not more than 25% of the dwelling units shall be devoted to the home occupation." So...
I don't remember us crossing out the, the sentence about no employees outside of the family, uh...
That's, yeah, that is correct. That was, that was the staff recommendation, primarily because that, the wording in that is confusing, um, in that it could be interpreted that employees can't, cannot reside in the dwelling unit. So, essentially, the decision has to be made by the commission as to whether employees should be allowed to work in a home occupation situation. Um, and if not, I would just, then just reword that to be more clear that it doesn't have anything to do with whether or not they're living in the dwelling unit, but that they're, just that employees are not allowed to work.
In the home occupation portion of...
If they're not, if they're not living in the home.
Well, I'm sure I'll follow you. No.
I think it all goes back to the first line where it says, "Carried on by persons residing within the dwelling unit."
That's true.
So, we're just repeating ourselves.
Maybe that's, maybe that's what we're saying.
Yeah, that could be, I'm not sure.
Kind of in there twice.
Yeah. Any other comments or concerns or questions about the new wording? All right, well then, let's close the public hearing for it. And, yeah, and then we move on to the next one.
We don't really have a motion for...
To close it, no, but then we need to decide what recommend, what recommendation we're sending to the town council.
Yeah.
So, that we need to make a motion for. Do we do those all individually, Ben?
Yes.
Since they're all different, a little bit confusing. All right, so, then I move that we forward the changes to town code 10.04.010 definitions, the home occupation definition, to the town council for approval.
I second.
Vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and number three. So, now we have a public hearing talking about the changes in the amendment 10.02.130. There's two sections, what it said before, and then what recommending the changes are out, what it looks like after.
And again, this is, just for clarification, this is staff recommendations, the language is recommended, so this isn't something that has been recommended by the, anyone, this is from me.
Okay.
I didn't remember.
Which is always indicative, but, yeah.
And maybe I could provide some background on this, if that would be helpful.
Yeah, please.
Um, so, and, and this is written down below also, under staff comments, but the state requires that the planning commission, uh, hold a hearing in order to make landings regulation changes, and they require a 10-day minimum notice. So, town regulations require a 14-day public notice, which I don't have a problem with, but if a decision is made on a, um, to have, to hold a public hearing in, by this body, you're not able to actually have the hearing until two meetings subsequent to that decision. It just makes it so you can hold the hearing sooner. Um, and it also clarifies that, this is something that Forrest and I have, have talked about before, clarifies which body has to hold the hearing. Um, that, that first line, I think, is, is open to interpretation, whether that hearing has to be held by the town council or the planning commission. So, I think it's, it's fine if we want to have the town council hold public hearings, but let's just clarify which body is doing it.
Right.
I would, I would say that, my reading is that they both have hearing.
In the state, in state code, or...
Nothing to do with state code, it's town code.
As it's currently written, right.
Right, and, and many towns do that.
Yeah.
Whether they should or not, that's really everything to do with state, it's town option.
What advice for our council was to, that we only had to have one hearing?
Right, you only have to have one, but if you're...
That's how the, uh, the privilege was, that as he read it, but, uh, so, clean up the codes, a good idea.
So, this, the, the after one would read, "This title, including the maps, may be amended from time to time by the town council. All proposed amendments shall be first proposed by the planning commission or shall be submitted to the planning commission for its recommendation. Prior to a recommendation, the planning commission shall hold a public hearing after 10 days' notice. The recommendation shall be returned to the town council for its consideration, and the town council may overrule the planning commission's recommendation by a majority vote of its members." So, seems pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
So, let's go ahead and open the public hearing for this change, and are there any questions or comments about that? Concerns, ideas, thoughts?
Uh, I, I prefer it the way it is, but I...
The 14 days?
No, no, the, about two, two hearings.
Oh. But you said the town council recommended to swan to?
That's all that's required, is, is one public hearing. I think when we have a public hearing, that's, gives people the opportunity to have two public hearings.
People don't pay any attention to, to, uh, planning commission public hearings at all.
Well, then that's on them.
Well, maybe they should start...
Well, they should, but that's...
I'm not sure they listen to, uh, town council anymore.
Yeah, people hear what they want.
I agree with the one public hearing, but I think we didn't have a...
Keep in mind when we're doing these public hearings, everybody's getting an OSA to mail.
Yeah.
We, we mail out OSA's to their house on all this stuff, and if they don't have the gumption to come in, they probably don't care, whatever it is we're doing, so...
On, we're mailing on public hearings?
On a public, when, anytime that we're doing a zone change or general map change, we have to send out a letter to everybody that is involved in that within a radius of...
But not the whole town?
No, no, just those that are affected by that.
But these rules affect the whole town, so you're going to mail to all the towns?
No, I'm talking about that when we're, if we're doing a general map change that requires a public hearing, that everybody that's involved in that general map change or in that radius of that, that's whatever our code spells out, is mailed a direct letter of the public hearing notice. So, this isn't like you're, we're doing anything, uh, clandestine or anything, I mean, we're talking about in their face, in their mailbox.
It's like everybody on room one.
And those are the hearings people really care about, the things that affect them personally in their neighborhood. Ones like this, I don't see it's, I don't see the reason for a little change like this to have to be run through two public hearings. Like, we're having one hearing for it now, a hearing without hearing notice.
Washington County does it, Washington City, Cedar City, Tocqueville, Comanah, Ivans, St. George.
They have, they have two hearings on each even tiny little change.
Yes, now.
Well, we don't have to be...
No, we don't have to. No, I didn't say we have to, I'm just saying it's fairly common.
Well, I can, you know, we can, uh, have, uh, ask council again, you know, this is a suggestion that someone came up with, I didn't even do it, but...
To be fair, the Virgin Rockville and San Clara do not have two hearings, they just have the PC hearing, so it is totally town optional.
That's where it should start, is the PC, and then we hand it off to you, and you, yea or nay.
I think it would surprise Sean if St. George does, because he's the one that made the suggestion that we only need one, that we don't need to have two hearings.
Well, let us put up with the hearing.
Uh, St. George has two for a general plan amendment, and probably don't have two for rural changes, if there's a difference.
Well, I'm, I'm okay with, with one while we're small, if we decide we want to go to two later for bigger issues, we can always do that, I would think. This is just saying what's required for sure, doesn't mean that we can't do things optionally sometimes, right?
It's totally up to you guys, if you want two hearings, we do two hearings. It, it looked like, to me, it looked like a mistake in there, and our attorney said that you don't need but one, but, you know, if you feel like it's prudent to do it, it doesn't matter to me.
Yeah, the way, the way it's written now is carbon copy of the way the county has it written.
Yeah.
That's where it, where it came from.
And that's kind of the best way to go, because then everybody, all parties know what's going on.
Now, just because it does, it doesn't mean we have to do it, I admit, but I'm just saying that's...
Well, thanks for the research.
Fairly, fairly common thing.
I just think one hearing, because sometime if we have one hearing, then we got to wait another two weeks for another hearing, sometimes things get forgotten about.
Yes.
And then it gets kicked down to ten.
I would have a problem with changing the 10 to, uh, 14 days to 10 days, that probably makes sense.
Yeah.
I really like having two hearings, personally.
It means that the, the town council will also have to have a hearing, and they don't mean till a week after we would make our decision.
It doesn't really...
Then that's not 10 days.
In a way, though, it doesn't really change anything, if you think about it, because the, the thing that slows it down is that 14 days, because then you guys decide in this meeting that you want to do that, and it pushes it out a whole month.
Yeah.
Before the next person to look at it, but if you make a recommendation on a general map for someone and a zone change in one of your meetings after a public hearing and all that, and refer that to us, then we can notice it in, for the next town council meeting, two weeks, you know, later, and it really doesn't slow down that much at that point. I mean, it slows down, uh, an extra week or so.
I think 10 days is good.
Well, and I think one hearing is fine.
Yes.
Versus two.
And I think it should start here, and then the council, yea or nay, does it?
It's also an increasing cost to the people to do two hearings, because you have now two batches of envelopes to mail out, and we've got to get them to provide all that for us.
Do one.
Extra, you know, work on part of staff and everything to do it, so...
I should think it's best to go through the, the planning commission, so that we keep on top of what's going on.
I, I don't think that's the issue, the main issue is, we want just one hearing and change it to 10 days.
Yeah.
So, I don't think anyone's suggesting that it doesn't start here. Yeah, any other comments or questions or concerns about these changes, up to the hearing procedure? All right, so let's close that hearing, and then, let's go. What do you all feel about it?
Um, I guess the town council, if it thinks it's that much of an issue, they can handle it alone, take a few and answer hours, so...
I think their issue is they thought that one was fine too, but yeah, if it's a big enough topic, they can...
If it's something they want to have another hearing, they certainly could do that.
If not, they could be optional instead of written in code.
Right, right. For smaller things, to me, they could, yeah.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, I don't want to hog all the motions until someone else will make a motion. For, for number four?
For number four, uh...
Uh, yeah, I make a recommendation that we approve the changes to the, uh, one, 10-02-130 changes in the amendments, uh, changing the, uh, the, uh, hearing, public hearing after 10 days' notice through the planning commission.
I second.
Okay, vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
No.
Okay. And number five.
Oh, wasn't that interesting, I was...
That was so interesting.
What was it?
The shipping containers. That was a good one, Marty, to make...
It ended up, um, I think, you know, when you look at the, uh, the numbers too, I liked that it showed you by neighborhood too, where the respondents came from and percentages and, you know. Nice job for Ben to put this together.
We hope Ben...
Except that we're around with a petition for everybody on Mount Sinai, and if we don't count on Mount Sinai. I don't care what, what other people in town want to do, I want to do it in my neighborhood. We had, we had one behind Phillip's house, we got it out of there, you know, because there's no shipping containers in our, in our state, but we got, we got one into the city, we got one to the...
It, it doesn't say that, though, it's, it's, uh, it was ambiguous on...
Which one?
What did it say?
Our current code.
What did, what did it say?
It said shipping containers are allowed if they are...
They are, aren't, I'm sorry.
Are.
Are allowed?
If you make them presentable.
And you get a permit?
That's a new one, yeah, and I'm talking...
No, 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 no.
The old one's from 2010.
I'm talking from 10 and 9 and I have those books, and they say no, it could be...
Yes, I'm talking about from 2010.
Yeah.
So, that's the one we asked you guys to look at.
So, 2010 was saying that they're okay as long as they...
Done permanently.
We really added that in, the painting and the dent and changing them. But I, people can't store food in them, they're too hot, you know, it, you can't store feed or anything like that, and they're too hot. And down, like they found out down in our place, they, they, they flood, so, but I think we need to listen to the survey, and maybe talk about making changes.
You guys have looked at this, but, um, might want to let Ben go through this and explain what his analysis of some of this is, is a suggestion?
Can I, can I ask a question?
Yeah, you can ask a question.
Yes. I've, I've seen shipping containers with refrigerated units on them. I've seen shipping containers with winter ships.
With what?
I've seen shipping containers stacked on top of shipping containers. I have seen, um, sliding doors in them. I have seen shipping containers with vents on top to keep the air circulating.
Yeah.
Uh, you can put a refrigerated unit, because we had one right across the street from us, was there for six months, with a refrigerated unit on the front of it, it was, uh, definitely white. You can do a lot with a shipping container to make it usable for what it would be needed for, whether it's a 40 footer or a 20 footer, that's your option, but you just realize it just isn't a box, it can be made into many, many things.
Who's that woman that lives out by you that's wearing purple?
Tonya?
Tonya?
Well, we're kind of upset with you, because one of those shipping containers came from your area over to our area.
And not mine, you get upset at Phil, and he moved.
Okay.
And I may have made a green, two days after it passed there.
Yeah.
Yes.
I would like to make one comment, um, on over five acres, they say no limit on the amount of shipping containers you can have on your property. Uh, I think there should be a limit.
According to the survey?
The survey says no limit over five acres, so what are you going to have?
Well, I understand that the questions that we're asking were to, um, find out percentage-wise what people thought, and I think there's a lot of people thought there should be a limit. So, even though the question says, should there be a limit, people answered that, yeah, they should, or no, they shouldn't, and so there's, there's all the different, let's, let's go through this, if you don't mind.
Well, yeah, Margie?
On this, this, um, survey, is this a formal, was this supposed to be a formal survey or informal survey?
Can you define the difference?
Well, formal would be like, to me, it would be, if, if, if it's a formal thing, then, then that's the word, if it's an informal thing, then you're just getting people's opinion.
Yeah, so it, it wasn't a ballot measure, right?
Yeah.
It wasn't on the ballot, right, this is an informal survey according to, and I think that language is even put on the, I put that it's an informal survey. It's residents, it's not property owners, it's people that receive the utility bill essentially.
So, then people, it was just for the residents, and then if, if you own a lot, then, then it wasn't, you weren't counted?
I mean, it's not that they were excluded, it's, it's just that, uh, they, they may not have known about it. We communicated it through the utility bill.
Right, but you all paid that, that 30 bucks, um, scan by fee.
And it was online too, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I took, it was just online.
Maybe I should go through, just kind of work through it, and, and we can ask questions afterwards.
I love that 69 points.
Yeah, there were, there were a lot of comments on it. So, we ran it from November 5th through November 26th, we just, I just wanted to close it so that I could get it out before the Thanksgiving holiday. Um, it was available on both the back of the printed statement and on the, as a clickable link on email statements.
And we put it on page book, too.
Oh, great, yeah. 113 total responses, the majority of which came from, uh, the web form, so the online form. Um, this is for transparency purposes, just so that there's no, you know, I did remove 11 responses, all of which were duplicates, so, one because we got web and the billing form from the same person, and eight were just duplications on the, it looked like they double-clicked submit, so it came through strike. Um, but even when you do remove those responses, this is, this is the results from those removed responses, it's about proportional to the rest of the results anyway, so there's not a huge concern there. So, in regards to the formatting of the chart, if people are favorable, just for clarity purposes, I want to make sure it's easy to read, so if they're favorable to, to shipping containers, it's in green, unfavorable is in red, and neutral responses are in gray. Um, the strong responses are darker, so if you strongly disagree, black, black and white, they call it.
I saw it online.
I saw it online. But that's forty-seven percent, but it was right after the election. I know of the guys who feel that.
Well, most of the people who asked the surveys feel strongly one way or another.
Yeah, yeah.
If they don't care, if they don't care, they're not gonna care enough to call, call the survey.
I love the women because they're not paid as much.
Yeah, there's so many of them here tonight.
So-
So I think we should take the survey with a grain of salt, really.
Well, we will. I mean, the whole survey was to kind of get an idea of what, you know, people generally felt.
It's important to remember that the planning commission and the town council are the legislative bodies for the, for the town. Um, and you're voted in, appointed slash voted in to make decisions on behalf of the town. So this is just to get a feeler for the res, from the residents and to get their input directly, so. Um, the total for, in agreement for the, the general question, should they be allowed, is sixty-eight percent and twenty-five percent in opposition. Um, this, this one I, I thought was really interesting. This is the results by subdivision or by kind of general area. In the Gooseberry and Cedar Point subdivisions, that's where you get the most contrasting opinion. Um, troubling Wells and Canaan. I think this is probably what we would expect. If you, you know, the people that are kind of in the more formal subdivisions are, you get a little more opposition to the shipping containers.
And Apple Valley proper, does we like it or not?
Uh, yeah, over seventy-five percent were in favor in Apple Valley proper. Now that is pulling out, um, Apple Valley Drive and Gooseberry, so that's just kind of the gaseous area.
I can see shipping containers on Mount Sinai Drive.
So, the one thing that I wanted to point out with what the slide that Rich mentioned with, uh, acreage is that, um, there were, you know, let's see, I have some notes here. So the, the majority of respondents thought that, uh, on less than two acres, the, this is the size restriction. So it's a forty foot container versus a twenty foot container. Um, response, sorry, I'm a little confused about this slide. Um, the size issue, there's two sizes of containers generally, a twenty foot and a forty foot container. So in dark green, the fifty-one percent on less than two acres is that forty foot containers are okay. And then on two acres or more, a forty foot, sixty-six percent of respondents indicated that a forty foot container was okay. Uh, and this is the location, so they'd be allowed in the front yard, side yard, or backyard only. Um, about a third of, a third of respondents indicated that anywhere on the property. And that thirty-three percent, half one-third of respondents, is something that I found as a, as a pattern through the whole survey. It seemed like about one-third of respondents had said, don't restrict them at all. Anywhere regardless of property size, regardless, so about one out of every three people just said they don't wanna be regulated in this matter. Um, exterior requirements, so this is, uh, the question that, how much finishing should be required on a shipping container?
And there's your third again. From the shipping yard, it's okay.
Yeah, a third of the people said straight from the shipping yard is okay. And you see some colorful shipping containers, so that's a strong statement to make.
Yeah.
Um, the, the other option was painted to match home. And this is one, um, the question actually, the, that response said painted to match home. In some cases, it, and this was in the comments, it may be more appropriate to match it to the environment. If it's clear in the backyard, not even close to the house, a sage green might make more sense.
Yeah. And if the house is bright blue, you might not want shipping containers bright blue.
My favor was Richard. Rich, we should, uh, put a limit on them. Our, our code is very clear. And I, I don't think we should muddy it up anymore. And, um, but on larger lots, allow a couple more, but we'll have to talk about that. And where they should be, they should not be out on the road.
So if nothing else, um, I think it is important to clarify the code because the, it, the language currently reads that it meets the requirements of this section. Um, shipping containers are allowed as long as they meet the requirements of this section. The current interpretation of that is that you have to stucco, that it's, uh, under two hundred square feet, so you don't have to get a building permit. Um, but, you know, we've had residents come in and say, I don't really know what that means, meets the requirements of this section. And you walk through it with them and they said they don't see it that way. So I think just even, even clearing up the language would be helpful.
But let's put that on our agenda next.
Yeah, revisit that.
So we have had a public hearing on this already. So if the planning commission was ready to make a recommendation, you are free to do that. Um, to the town council, you could forward it based on this, but that's not to say that you have to this evening. Um, so the neighborhood representation, Gooseberry had a great turnout.
You have some opinions out there.
Yeah, yeah.
There's a lot of containers.
Yeah, we have a lot of them.
Yep, and it's very polarized. Uh, it was about fifty-fifty in Gooseberry, so that's, that was kind of interesting. Um, the one thing that I wanted to make before I, uh, closed the survey was, um, I hope Forrest doesn't mind, but he brought in his comment, his personal comment in responding to this was actually very insightful for me. He said, if you allow shipping containers, what then happens to steel buildings, steel accessory buildings?
Well, uh, CDs.
So how do you, how and why do you distinguish between those two at that point?
If, if you loosen, loosen rules for shipping containers, how do you not loosen rules for all accessory buildings?
And that's something that, that would have to be addressed, yeah.
The only way to do that is pull shipping containers out of accessory buildings, if you ask me, but how to do that, I don't know. But yeah, this whole exercise is a little off in my ways, thank you.
I agree.
A shipping container technically is a mobile unit. So it's not a structure as if a metal building would be a structure.
But it is an accessory building.
It's deemed that, and so maybe it would be pertinent to separate it out since it is a different animal. Just-
That's why we should really work at it a little bit.
Put it to the thought.
If that, if that can be done, I, I might be proud of that because the way we're approaching this, we're saying, well, it's a shipping container survey. And it's really not. It's an accessory building survey. Do you see what I'm saying? Because we're gonna say, okay, here's a shipping container. All you have to do is paint it with, with some really bad paint and make it blend with something, and we're good. Well, how, what do you tell the guy who brings in a pole barn?
Well, wait a minute, Forrest. Let's not be messing with barns.
But you know what I'm saying?
No, I do.
Or, or a freight trailer, fifty-five foot freight trailer.
Well, we will have limits to that.
And, and I don't have a, a horse in this race at all, but-
Why wouldn't you?
I think this was definitely for shipping containers. This, this wasn't have anything to do with accessory buildings. I think-
But they're, they're accessory buildings.
Once they get a certain size, yeah, they are.
So then we could feasibly leave the accessory building thing alone and not count shipping containers as an accessory building and have a separate part. It says, these are the, these are the parameters for a shipping container. And not, and not even, not even put it with the accessory building. It's a separate thing.
Logically, that makes a lot more sense to me. Now, whether it makes sense for the town, that's really up to the town.
Well, I think we call it shipping containers and have, this is allowed in these kind of sizes of lots and it has to be this way, then it doesn't really leave a lot of wiggle.
It'll get some, um, requirements about blending of, with something.
Yeah, that, that would be one of the requirements for the shipping container. But if we take it out of the accessory building, then the accessory building can still match the house and be a certain style, and that way it doesn't open up that door to other metal structures.
I mean, we, we already have, oh, five hundred accessory buildings here in town that don't match. They don't blend with the material, but so.
You're doing apples and oranges here and it's not working out. We need to separate it.
Yeah.
It's just, we'll do separate.
So you like that idea? Making it separate?
If it can be done. I'm a little skeptical about being-
Why could it not be done? You can add accessories.
It can be done.
And on the accessory building, if we specifically exclude shipping containers, then say, say section.
Well, it's just be a separate part of the code. It's not going to point to it at all.
Yeah, right now, they're, they are accessory buildings, at least according to the code.
So that requires some confusion right there, taking them out of accessory building.
Well, if you wanna loosen up the rules, I don't see how you loosen up those rules without loosening up rules for all accessory buildings.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Uh, Joe Blow's gonna come in and say, yeah, okay, it's not a good shipping container, but it's, it's type of freight trailer. Why, why can't I do whatever I want with that?
Yeah, but if we leave accessory building description like it is right now, where it says it has to be, you know, match the house and can't be out of this material, then that would keep them from doing that.
For, for the freight trailer, you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, there's no code for it, so it's done wrong.
Well, I, I like that idea better, but that's more work and whatever I want.
Yes.
So after your public hearing and, you know, what was your, what was the, um, planning commission's recommendations then for the shipping containers?
We, we didn't make recommendations. We were, we were waiting for the survey results.
Okay, so, so, but we have the public hearing.
Yeah.
So we're gonna have another public hearing?
We've had a public hearing, so we can check that off, the must do's.
Okay, so then, then the people that showed up to the public hearing that had, you know, there was a lot that, you know, really were very vocal against shipping containers, so are you gonna take that into consideration still?
Yeah, because, remember how I took an informal vote?
Yeah, but some of those people didn't even own property here, and there were some kids that voted too.
Alright, well, the overwhelming was allowing shipping containers within reason.
Right.
And, and so those got, the majority of the votes where the none at all and the any way you want, as many as you want, were just fringe votes. So even if you, you know, look at who voted what way, I still, you know, the, the majority was still, you know, being reasonable about it. And then we can kind of define what, how we interpret reasonable.
Since, since all those people that, you know, filled out the shipping container surveys are here to hear the, the results.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, where are they?
So, I mean, I definitely think, um, now if we were going to change the code to make a separate, a, a separate little section for shipping containers, we'd have to have a hearing about that because that's changing the code. And so that could feasibly open the door to further discussion of the issue. Cause we will be discussing how we want that, um, phrase and everything.
And maybe you want to have the acres.
You know, I do have a question in regards to placement. And, you know, so if your side yard starts at where your garage is in the front, so, you know, theoretically, that thing could be like in, in your front yard.
Yeah. If your, if your garage is jutted out further than that. Yeah, the side yard starts whatever the frontmost corner is pretty much of the house, so, yeah.
Well, your plot plan should designate where your front yard, side yard, and everything is located according to what was signed off when your property, your house was built. So you would kind of go by a plot plan or something that-
Well, it's actually in the code defining where, where the side yard is and where the front yard is cause it, it's based off of the, the corners of your house.
It is, but it also designates it on your plot plan too.
No.
Not all of them?
Nope.
And I know mine's-
Well, you have a tricky house though, cause you're right on, you know, two, yeah, so.
Yeah, it's a very tricky house because I still didn't even know where the pot is yet.
I know where the side is. Your, your mailing address, what street is that?
Little Pinion.
Then that's your front.
And then you've got a problem with a new house that's being built. And this new house has an address of Little Pinion Way, but then the front entrance, there is no entrance on Little Pinion Way. It's being built now. The entrance is on, uh, Purple Sage. So it's facing Purple Sage.
They requested a Purple Sage address. That's been pre-signed.
Oh, did they?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Well, that's fine then. I'm just kind of confused by that.
Yeah, it's facing. So, yeah, I do think we need to, um-
Revisit.
Yeah, and figure out how we want to, how we want to leave the accessory building definition and, and, you know, um, rules and everything. And then how we would want to phrase the shipping container on. And then we would have to have a hearing to talk about that, and so.
We could have it first of the year, right? How do you do that the first of the year?
Yeah.
I, I think that makes sense. This has gotten complicated enough. Uh, another small ordinance wouldn't hurt things, seems to me, but.
Just to, just to break it down a little further to define things. Yeah, I, I think, I think my, I think my term ends in January, so, so, yeah.
Don't smile, I'm submitting that.
You're good with that, right?
Eight years.
And when you appreciate it.
My tour of duty right there. But I'll, I'll say the whole year. So, alright. Alright, so, yeah, we'll definitely, so our recommendation is to look at it again next time. Yeah, and to come up with some phrasing and ideas for that.
Would, would that be the time to have a public hearing or get something a little more concrete?
Well, I think we need to get it down.
We need to write it up first.
Cause we've already got public opinion, so we need to write it up. And I think it's important for us to kind of present a united front at the hearing that we've come up and, and, and come up with our ideas together, so. Alright.
Is there, is there some way to write shipping container and keep it in accessory buildings? Separate it out without taking it out? Does that make sense?
No.
No, we need to- Let's just get its own quoted number. We can just, I mean, there's all these points. We can just, you know, do a point. Yeah, just add another. So it'll, it'll come right after the accessory building, but it won't be part of that section. It'll have its own little special spot.
Um, the blurb that, that does say something about shipping containers in the code also does mention trailers and boxes and crates and several other things, so we need to think, are we gonna take all that out?
Well, yeah, we just, that's why we need to revisit this and kind of make sure we clean up everything, so.
Okay.
Alright, and then the last item on the agenda is to discuss, um, ten point fourteen point zero two zero point B point one. Short-term vacation rental rules and regulations slash bed and breakfast in commercial zoning. So how did this come onto the?
This was a, uh, there was a public comment in, in our last town council meeting. Uh, some had a, a resident had applied to use a portion of her home as a short-term vacation rental. And the code says that in order to, uh, that she would not be eligible for short-term vacation rentals, but she would be eligible for bed and breakfast. Now, working with, um, Forrest, I was able to understand a little bit more about what a bed and breakfast is. So there's two types of bed and breakfast. There's a bed and breakfast home, which is defined in our, in our code. And there's a bed and breakfast inn. So the difference between the two is that a home is allowed four bedrooms, can be rented out as a bed and breakfast. A bed and breakfast inn is allowed up to eight rooms. The zoning requirement is in the, a home, it can be in a residential zone. And for an inn, it has to be a commercial zone. So that, cleared that up for me. However, the term bed and breakfast home is only defined. That's the only place that occurs in our code. It does not explicitly allow it in any residential zone. So under, under permitted uses, I would foresee that you put bed and breakfast home as a permitted use in the single-family rural estate zoning.
Yeah, I agree.
I think that's, I think that's the intent of the code. You know, they defined it as bed and breakfast home, bed and breakfast inn, but-
Well, we used to have, um, had, we were able to have up to ten percent of the homes in any phase.
And that's, that's a short-term vacation rental.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Well, also for bed and breakfast- Well, also for bed and breakfast, where you take care of your gifts and live there.
Now.
My neighbor does that.
Yeah, so my understanding on that is that bed and breakfast homes don't have that percentage requirement, nor distance requirement. So you could have four bed and breakfasts all in a row.
Okay.
And, and the idea there is that you have an owner vested interest living in the home still. There's still a party, there's still a neighborhood resident, they want to keep the neighborhood nice.
I agree.
And so that's, I think that's the distinction between a bed and breakfast and a short-term vacation rental, and the reason for those requirements, additional requirements on the short-term vacation rental.
So is this something you have to schedule a hearing for, though?
To finish that out, though, the person who brought that up had a basement, finished basement, and wanted to be able to rent that out while she's still living in the home. I'm not sure that you got that message across in your explanation.
Yeah, I thought she said bed and breakfast in that meeting.
That's what I thought, she said two bed and breakfasts.
I was thinking short-term, once she applied.
I think people use, she applied for a short-term.
Short-term.
But that could just, could just have been confusing.
Yeah.
Bed and breakfast is after you're.
It confuses me, so why would.
As a, as a homeowner, I was going to add a portion of your home, is there a difference between a bed and breakfast and a short-term vacation rental? I mean, there's not a cost difference as far as licensing. There's a few more requirements in the bed and breakfast that maybe, like, maybe parking requirements?
They have to have parking off the street, on, on the property. And you have to have enough parking spaces for however many rooms you're managing.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Ben, but I, my understanding is.
I see, I just am waiting for people to finish, I'll catch you.
On the short-term vacation rental, it said that you cannot live in the home that you're renting out. I think it expressly says that.
That is correct.
And then we're wondering, why is that important? That they not live there, it seemed like there would be less problems if they did live there. And is that a big deal? And is there a reason for it? I mean, I can't think of one, but.
I'd like, if my husband dies, I've got eight bedrooms in that house. I'd love to have a bed and breakfast.
I'm talking about the short-term vacation rental, let's focus on one of them.
Huh?
Short-term vacation rental.
Yeah, well, Mark's got two like that, aren't they? And then Shelby has one, and Jack's old house is turned into one. And Jim lives in his house and rents out the basement.
So the difference between the two, a short-term vacation rental and a bed and breakfast, the bed and breakfast home require, only allows for four bedrooms, and it doesn't have, you can do them next to each other, they can be neighbors. There's no requirements for the percentage of the subdivision. Where the short-term vacation rental is just a little bit tighter because the person doesn't live there.
Yeah, that's like the definition, is they don't live there.
Yeah.
But that's.
Part of the difference.
But is that necessary for them to?
But that's, to her point, that we have these going on right now, where we have a resident in a casita and they're renting out the main house. And according to the code, it could be that that's not legal to do it that way.
That, that is not legal from my understanding.
Well, but if it's, uh, if it's a separate, like, separate entrance, separate.
Well, these are, this is the reason it's on a docket, just so you understand. The reason we're bringing it up was just to get clarification.
I was, and again, this is just my interpretation of things, I always interpret, um, bed and breakfast is like one house, and you're all in the same house together, and there are just bedrooms that are different. Where the short-term rental, it's a self-contained unit. With, that's not really connected to the house. Um, it could be a casita on the property, but it's not connected to the house, it's its own little unit. And I would, I would still consider that to be short-term rental.
And in the case of this particular person there trying to rent their basement out, which, um, so it's connected to the house, and we have a rule against that, but do we need to have a rule against that?
Yeah.
That's why she came to the public hearing to voice that, to ask that question, why are we putting that thing happening? Because she likes that we all rent our basins out.
Now, just to look at it.
Yeah, especially since, you know, we're getting older and have lots of rooms available.
That's very common up north, that people rent out their basins, because everybody has one. And all they do is lock the two, so they can, uh.
But our current code prevents that, so.
Yeah.
Or just.
That's very common.
Where does it say that?
It's right at the very beginning.
It's already asked in here, too, you know, so you don't think it is, it is.
So, Margie, what were you gonna say?
What I was gonna say is, um, you know, several of the town council people, you know, think Hurricanes codes are looser. So I made a copy of their bed and breakfast code for you guys that you could read over, and, you know, maybe take, you know, adopt their code. That way we wouldn't have to, you know, have it vetted or anything like that. It would already be vetted, we wouldn't have to have the lawyer go through it and everything, because their code's already vetted.
It would stop having a hearing for us, but, yeah. Yes.
We need to be careful about just blanketing someone else's code enforcements from a different community.
Oh, of course.
It may not be applicable to Apple Valley at all.
No, we, we've never done that, we haven't.
And the second one, the original B and Bs were set up, that was for an owner occupancy, with tenants in their home. Their rental unit is a separate house, not a house and another house on your property, but the, literally the home you're living in, you move out, you put it under those terms and conditions of that contract. Now, if you've got someone who's built a home, and they put a casita there for the kids to stay in once in a great while when they come up, that's one thing. If you take and build that, and you move into it, and then you take your big home and you're renting that out on a permanent basis, now you're talking, that's not an R one. They're taking an R one and they're changing it to something else that it shouldn't be. Now, I'm not saying that it's not okay, or that I disagree with it, I'm just saying you want to find line, where are you going with your ordinances on that?
When we started to rewrite chapter fifteen, that additional whatever back with Roberts, when we'd sit in a little round table and discuss this, we discussed that and said that, um, that if someone wanted to, they could live in their casita and rent out their big house, because what's the harm? And so, but, but that supplementary chapter was never finalized and approved. So that's why we're still going with the old chapter fifteen.
I think some of that is, um, already in our code, but I, I think that, uh, do you have that code handy on that?
Because Mark built his casita just so he could rent out his two big houses.
Because, uh, you know, so John Pay can do it because he has a separate casita, but this person that has a basement cannot, according to the way it's written right now. It doesn't take very much to change that if you feel like it's the right way to do it, that's, that's kind of why we brought this up.
Well, what, the person with the basement, why can't they just sign up as a B and B?
Yeah.
Well, they probably could, but it's, uh, at the time it was.
Well, you don't have, you don't have to do breakfast for a B and B, it turns out, or whatever.
In a C and B.
Yeah.
I, I, I want to answer that question, that, um, it's a large home, and there could be more than eight bedrooms, that now makes it required to go commercial, when that's not her intent to even rent out the whole house, just the basement part of it.
Well, she could go up to four without.
Yeah, but, but how do we?
How do we?
How do we say yes or no on, oh, they've got, you know, ten bedrooms, and we say, oh, well, we're gonna use four of them, how do you?
Right, how do you do that?
You know, so. And I'm not sure that's, you know, our business, I'm just.
It might be easier for people to do a B and B, because, um, a short-term vacation rental, you can only have a certain amount in a neighborhood, where that's not regulated with the B and B, right? So.
Well, honestly, I think parking is starting the biggest holdup on a situation like this. We're not gonna have any parking for eight or ten, twelve cars. Nobody's got that, well, you might have.
Well, this really needs to be straightened up, because we have people that are not following rules.
Well, I think we're all, we have people who don't follow the rules, we just have to make sure we make the rules to the best of our ability and then get from there.
Because when I rent out my rooms and my husband dies, come on, I help.
I was just thinking, if we had a, uh, vacation rental situation where someone was willing to stay in their master bedroom and manage the house, it's probably the ideal situation, where they're right there making sure there's no crap going on, and we don't have that.
Yeah, we don't have all the time using two o'clock in the morning.
Yet the rule, if you read it, it prevents that from happening right now.
And it didn't when we were trying to make our changes, we changed that, but it never, it never went through.
And it doesn't take very much, just strike out a couple of words, and then we'll probably be okay, and then, and that's all this person was asking us to look at, and I think that.
Because I've heard too much loud music at two o'clock in the morning from Shelby's, because nobody's there.
Yeah.
And they put on Facebook, we're here in Apple Valley, I'm joining.
Well, so obviously, we're gonna have to revisit this one, too.
Yes.
And, and, um, and look about, you know, how to rephrase it, and what, how we want to define things, and if there's a good reason for limitations, fine, but if there's really no good reason for limitations, then why would we have them? So.
I'm not sure that there is a good reason, I just, I couldn't think.
No, that's what I'm saying, we have to look at that and see. If it's a logical reason, then fine, but if it's just, we're just making things weird for no reason at all, then.
I don't think we should make things weird.
That's right.
I think they're already weird, please.
I think when that code originally came up, um, that it was, if you're gonna rent out a house, and the people that are coming to rent out that house, they don't want you on the property. That's, that was, I think, and it had something to do with the state code, I can't remember what the number was. And so that's, that's how, I think that's why it was, it was presented that way, that, you know, if, if you're renting out the property, you're renting out the property, you're not renting out just the room or the top floor, you're renting out the property.
Yeah.
And, and that's, that's how it was presented, and that's how it was passed. Now, I don't, you know.
Now with the explosion of Airbnb and couch surfing and all that stuff, it kind of opened it up.
Well, the problem with that, too, is it also, when, if you, you know, like, we're still, we're not that, we don't have that many, because they're limited, but there are some places in the United States that do have a lot of them, and the, and it, it, for one, it takes away, you know, rental, you know, renting, you know, for people that want to live here and rent a house, then they can't find affordable renting, because you've got too many short-term vacation rentals.
Right.
And, and, you know, there, there are problems if you're, you know, like in Las Vegas, there's a lot of problems with them.
Well, Rockville, that's all Rockville has.
You know, I'm just saying, you, you know, as, as it gets bigger, and if the town does get bigger, you, you may find you have more problems with them.
So, yeah, we should, we should.
That's why the ten percent came into it.
Yeah.
Yeah, with the short term.
Yeah, for short terms.
I think Sean had something to do with that, a little bit, or maybe he said.
So let's redefine the rules on that and the, and, um, take the containers out of accessory buildings. So those are our two jobs that we got coming up.
Of course, two weeks from today is Christmas Day, so obviously we're not.
I know, I won't be here.
Obviously, we're not having a meeting.
Oh, come on, you guys, take one for the team.
I'll be here, but I'm not gonna be here.
I'm gonna be here, I'm gonna be sort of. I have, I have one thing to bring up, um, I'm sorry. I have a package from August fourteenth, and we tabled a discussion item. And the discussion item was the getting the, to get the, the density out of Bubbling Wells to low density. And we tabled it in August, and we've never brought it back up.
Well, that was part of the map.
That was part of the map, when we were deciding what section was.
Right, it was, we changed it in that.
Okay, I have broken toe, I couldn't sit there and hide with you, nice. But let's get this, in, in light of life for the people out there.
Well, that brings up a question, Ben, you said something about the, the map, when we discussed that, the map that night, I forget which night, October ninth, maybe. And you were saying now that's on the website, or?
Yeah, Cynthia, uh, wrote a bunch of notes, based on the discussion, and that is available as part of the packet.
Okay, well, what's Bubbling Wells then?
Part of this pack?
No, 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 part of the packet from that meeting, so it was, it was made as an addition to that packet. I'll have to double-check to make sure that it was scanned, but I know that we have it in the hard copies.
You just put that in the mail, of course.
In the.
Out of mail?
Yeah, I don't think I, we haven't seen anything.
I, I haven't seen it cleaned up, it looks pretty.
But we made, we made it so the, so the bubbling well area was.
Counted ones, right?
No, five, five, yeah.
It's not cleaned up.
No.
Yeah, no, this is still a lot of just standard notes.
You're saying that the inherent things, what you're talking about, not, not a finished.
Correct.
Okay, so we, so we need to work on that also.
We need, we need to, you know, change up the color, letter, yeah, letter, yes, that's, no, the nomenclature. Or the color budget, yeah, that will.
But that was in a later packet, you said.
In a later.
Not in a later packet, so, when, when a new handout comes in, or when there's additions made to a packet, it's added to that night's packet, meeting.
Oh, and then you have to go back, go back.
I could email it out, I mean, that's not a problem.
Just don't cheat, do you know what I mean?
Yep.
Because we're crossing stuff out, making notes.
Yeah, I know. Well, I just wanted to make sure the Bubbling Wells has taken care of that.
Yeah, well, I think that, I think the, the map does take care of that, because it's taking like the whole plan.
Now, that's still got, somebody's gotta have a hearing for it.
Yeah, of course.
Now, I, I would suggest the town council did, but I'm worried it's all after here.
We need to clean up the map, and then, and then we're cutting hearings, but.
That'll be a long one.
Bubbling Wells?
Yeah, just, what are you talking about, January? So what is our next meeting, then?
January.
Next year.
Eighth.
Is the eighth, the, well, because.
First is Wednesday, and, um.
But you guys are supposed to have the first of the month.
It's sworn in, a mayor's supposed to happen on the sixth, so we're gonna move our meeting to the Monday night.
Oh, okay.
So we keep yours the same, which will be the eighth.
Okay.
Okay.
So January eighth. We will.
Okay, we'll work on the.
We'll look at the map thing and the shipping containers thing, oh, and the vacation, yeah.
As the map.
Okay.
Are gonna be your last.
It might be, though.
You've gotta work a month of January.
I thought, I thought we, we decided on the sixth.
Give me the meeting every week.
I think the most of that we adjourned.
We what, I give you a meeting for that?
Every, every.
Can it be to motion?
I make a motion of adjournment.
So.
Vote. Aye?
Aye.
Aye? Thank you.
Cynthia, I have, that package there is, uh, next week, or sorry, next year's meeting schedule. Yep, you did.
Oh, okay.
So you just, basically, just have to say, if you want to change it, and I know it sounds like you're probably not even the, the, going to be a part of it, but do you think it makes us to keep the same schedule for the final meeting?
I think so. So if we aspire on this.
This six, this was your option.
And also then, um, and when they have their swearing-in and everything, they'll be appointed to the same.
If, yeah, if there's people that have supplied and been, that would be the night that they do it. You cannot do it before the sixth, but if you don't have the position filled, you, it can be a vacant position, so it's filled, so. Four, uh, who stays, when? January sixth, all four seats are expired. We can double-check, but I'm pretty sure that they made it, that all seats expire January sixth. Oh, it's on the website, it's November, um. Uh-uh, no, it's January sixth. Oh, can I get your notes on the minutes for the meeting? Perfect, that'd be great. So that's the twenty-fifth. September twenty-fifth, yep. Well, that depends. I guess that depends if you're reappointed.
Yeah, there's so much to do, it definitely can work out fast. I would hope that you guys all see any day, because that's why I feel safe stepping down, you guys are all asleep, so I don't have to worry about that.
She's gonna have two ears now.
That's a long time.
Yeah, yeah, she's gonna do four ears in two.
I was here, I was working with, with Dale Beddo was on the plan.
Okay, four.